Alright.
Okay.
Welcome to our Planning and Zoning Council meeting this evening, March nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Do we, we need to do a roll call on disclosures of conflicts? Start with that. Actually, do we want to prove the agenda first?
No.
No, we don't have to, it's not up to city. Okay, there's no public. Very, okay.
Molly Dillon?
President with no conflict.
Chad Sullivan?
Uh, here, no conflict.
Edward Orange?
Here, no conflict.
Crystal Watson?
Here, no conflict.
Uh, for the business, agenda clarification. Do we have any clarification on the agenda tonight?
Thank you Chair, how Jensen Planning Director. We need to amend the agenda and remove item number four from this evening's public hearing.
Do I have a motion to remove item number four on the agenda? I'll file a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion's been filed and seconded to remove that. We don't need a roll call vote on that, right?
No, just acquiescence. So, all in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Alright, now we have some minutes to approve from the January fifteenth meeting. Have you guys had a chance to read through those? I went through them. But I'm not the most thorough. I kind of just glanced through to see if there's anything that catches my eye.
I did, I did the same thing, but I remember that meeting fairly well.
I remember that meeting very well too, so that's what I was looking for, is anything that stood out. Uh, it was a very long meeting and so. If nobody, did you happen to see anything Molly on that?
No.
Alright, then can we get a motion to approve the minutes as written for the January fifteenth meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes as written?
I'll second that.
It's been motion to approve and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? There's none opposed. Alright, just gonna move through the agenda then. Alright, so we'll just move on to the business item, which we don't need a motion to open up business items. But the, uh, the business item, let me get to agenda number five.
Page sixty-six.
Is that where it is?
Okay.
Close. Alright, sixty-six is business item. It is the preliminary plat approval for the Westfield Estates subdivision number six. Being that it's a business item, we still have them come up, right? No?
That's entirely up to you.
Okay, so we'll go through yours first and then if you have questions, we can bring whoever decides they want to come up.
Big crowd tonight, so.
Yes, big crowd, lots of opposition, I could see. So. So this is a preliminary plat, okay. I'll turn it over to you Tristan, is it you or Elise?
Elise Foster, subdivision banner.
Hey.
Um, you have the staff report in front of you. I had eight conditions, um, recommended to council. I reviewed number one a little closer and think work should be added to the end to make it a little bit more clear. So have that say roadside drainage swells to be built by the developer before final plat is recorded. We review their construction plans during the final plat, so that will help clarify that.
Okay. Have you reviewed those yet? Have you heard those yet?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, if you're okay, I'm gonna read through them just for record. Uh, so the road, so the recommendation number one from the staff was roadside drainage swells to be built as the developer, by the developer, before the final plat is recorded. Um, all roads, name signs and traffic signs shall be installed within Westfield Estates Phase Four. All ro- uh, and approved, and approved by staff before Westfield Estates Phase Six shall be recorded. Uh, number three is all easements shall be depicted on the plat. Number four is all roads must be built by county highway standards and roadway development procedures. Number five is irrigation line within right-of-way shall be an easement created. No utilities other than that city water and city sewer shall be installed within that right-of-way. Number six is development agreement instrument number to be re- uh, referenced on the final plat. Number seven was county variance instrument number two-two-one-two-seven-five-four-zero to be referenced on the final plat. And then CCR shall be referenced, Westfield Estates subdivision six subdivision name. Was there anything else that you guys had that you wanted us to look at or go over?
Um, just to clarify, lot nine was actually part of Westfield Estates Phase Four. They are including it in this phase because there was a structure built that didn't meet setback. So rather than going through a variance process, they chose to just include it in this and make that lot a little bit larger to meet setback requirements. Other than that, everything aligns with the other phases that we've done. I think preliminary plat didn't include the easements on lot nine, but they're there on Phase Four, so they would just need to update those easements on final plat.
Okay.
To reflect. Other than that, I didn't have any other concerns.
Any of you guys have a question?
Yeah, I had a question, um, for the staff, but I saw somewhere in here that in their CCRs, they were referring to this as division one.
Their original CCNRs are from Division One and what they've done in the past is just a one pager that says.
An addendum.
Yeah, Phase Five will meet the same requirements as Phase One and be part of those CCRs.
And so on as the phase goes.
Correct.
Every time I get in here and I'm scrolling, it like glitches and goes back to page one.
It's doing that to me when I scroll to the actual plat.
Just make sure I'm not very crazy here, so apologize. Alright, um, Molly, did you have any other questions?
Um, just condition number five, um, no utilities other than city water and city sewer shall be installed within the right-of-way. Would there need to be a separate right-of-way for the other utilities or?
So Bannet County Road and Bridge policy is there are no utilities within the right-of-way except for if there's city services. And those city services may be in the right-of-way. All other phases ended up having irrigation within the right-of-way. So they just need to create an easement to be consistent with the past phases and have that easement for just the irrigation. All other utilities will need to be outside of the right-of-way in the fifteen-foot utility easement. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you.
So just for.
You just touched it, that's all.
So just for the rest of you guys is new. They've gone through, drawn their preliminary plat, that's what we're looking at now. The staff has looked at that preliminary plat. To move on to the next phase, they've given them recommendations to get on to a final plat. And that's more or less what we're here to do, is see that they did turn in a preliminary plat. They met the requirements of preliminary plat and as we agree to that preliminary plat, we want them to make specific changes to it before then can go to the final plat. And a final, and that's still a business item is a final plat, correct?
Final plat eventually goes in front of commission for signatures.
That's right.
Um, we do review construction plans through that process. Another surveyor reviews their surveyor's work to make sure it meets item code from the surveyor law standpoint. Um, and then staff and an engineer review the plat and the construction plans.
Okay. So are only, because this is a business item, is a motion to approve it with the recommendations or add recommendations, if you guys wanted to add recommendations.
As long as it meets the criteria of approval.
You have findings to go through.
Add, trying to get to them. Put it down, it keeps freaking out. Sorry for the frustration.
Here's a paper copy.
Perfect.
So, here is where the criteria of approval, so this is one, two, three, four.
So do we have? This is the criteria of approval, but do we have a? What do I need to do?
So preliminary plat is or is not in conformance?
Yeah, so just start working through the findings as part of your discussion.
Okay.
We, have they, do we want to bring them up?
Yeah, if you have any additional questions, you're welcome to bring them up.
Recommendations and.
Did you guys have any questions on the recommendations that we went through?
No, I don't, I think everything was set before, we've gone over everything, so if you have any questions.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be more complicated than Ace giving one. Yeah, go ahead. Name and address, yeah, so that ours can record you then.
Tanner Stanquist, uh, Intermountain Development Construction, uh, one fifty-eight South Main Street, Pocatello, three-two-zero-four. There was a condition about the Westfield Estates Division Four road signs and then being approved and in, they are in. So I probably just didn't let somebody at the county know that they, someone could go out there and inspect them and make sure that they are in, so they are in and done.
We'll, we'll leave it on there just so that it's a note to be in mind that somebody needs to check it. If that's cool, then, and we'll just leave it on there.
That works for me, I just wanted to speak to that and let it be known that it, they're in and done.
Perfect. Alright, so I'm gonna read through these and we'll discuss them. So the preliminary plat is in conformance with the Bannet County Planning and Development Council's approved concept plan. All application provisions of this ordinance, other ordinance codes and ordinances and Idaho code. Like we can't, we used to say per staff findings, but we can't do that anymore.
It's all forbidden.
So, let's see here, how do we want to put this? That the Westfield Estates has met the requirements, has shown that they have met the requirements?
As per.
As per.
Staff recommendations.
And, and, and concept plan.
Original concept plan.
And original concept plan. Are you typing or are you? Let me read that back to me real quick. Don't touch it. I wanted to be trying to do it, but I know it's a bit warmer. It's frustrating.
Okay, I have the preliminary plat is in conformance with staff recommendations, the approved concept plan and all zoning and subdivision ordinances.
Thank you. Second one is the street plan for the proposed subdivision will permit its development in accordance with the code. Per the plan, it meets all subdivision codes that, that will permit, that will, well, it's, the, when it, when it's a cul-de-sac, it still meets the codes. Okay, that's not the one. The one that I'm talking about is the next one, okay? So, the plan does meet the subdivision, proposed subdivision does meet the development ordinance codes. Per the ordinance and the staff findings, can we say that? So Phase Six is pretty long.
We want to trade back to you, something like that, but it looks good.
Um, what's the acronym for the Road and Bridge Manual? Which is Highway.
Highway Standards and Roadway Development Procedures for Bannet County.
Okay, the street plan meets the development ordinance codes per Highway Standards and Roadway Development Procedures for Bannet County. Did you want to add?
No, keeping it simple. The third one is the street plan for the proposed subdivision will permit the development of adjoining land by providing access to that land by right-of-way and what, and right-of-way dedicated to the county or a developed street to the property boundary. This one has only got a cul-de-sac, which is within county code to have.
It does have a cul-de-sac, it also connects to other roads.
The adjoining subdivision, par- uh, this is face, other subdivision phases, correct?
Correct.
So it'd be, well, because of the cul-de-sac, the cul-de-sac, at least that section of a, the development of adjoining land.
Other.
Yep.
Other adjoining lands are accessible from other roads and road development under the master plan.
Yeah. Basically, this is saying they're not popping in a subdivision that's gonna land lock somebody. Don't you not get access.
As new members of the council and not having seen that master plan from yeah, seven years ago, um, I decided to jump in and help you with that, which.
Okay, thank you.
So I have the street plan connects to the adjoining subdivision phases and has a cul-de-sac that will be constructed according to the HSRDP.
Perfect. None, then for when lot lines and roads do relate to land shapes and existing developments, this is Phase Six within a development and the land is relatively flat. I don't need to mention that there's not any major rivers, streams, mountains or ponds in the middle of it, do I? Okay. Conditions will be, um, one through.
One through nine, is that?
One through nine.
And when they just start, I don't know, we have to talk about changing number one.
Yeah, number one.
We got the eighty-sixty-six.
When, when you read, when you read the, uh, motion.
The motion and default to Tristan for reading of conditions.
Yes, that's what was all that. Yeah, and then you have to add, is as recorded at the end of that, alright, camera one. Go ahead.
Okay.
Alright.
Yep.
Okay, based on the record and the discussion this evening, I move to approve the request for the preliminary plat of Westfield Estates Division Six as described in the application materials as supplemented with additional information attached in the staff report and to adopt the proposed findings and order for signature by Chair or Vice Chair with the following conditions. Number one, roadside drainage swells to be built by the developer before final plat is recorded. Two, all road name signs and traffic signs shall be installed within Westfield Estates Phase Four and approved by staff before Westfield Estates Phase Six shall be recorded. Three, all easements shall be depicted on the plat. Four, all roads must be built to Bannet County Highway Standards and Roadway Development Procedures. Five, irrigation line within right-of-way shall have an easement created. No utilities other than city water and city sewer shall be installed within the right-of-way. Six, development agreement instrument number to be referenced on plat, on final plat. Seven, county variance instrument number two-two-one-two-seven-five-four-zero to be referenced on final plat. And eight, CCRs shall reference Westfield Estates Division Six subdivision name.
We've got a motion, we have a second. I'll second that. Our motion is second, we're gonna need a roll call vote.
Molly Dillon?
Yes.
Chad Sullivan?
Yes.
Edward Orange?
Yes.
And Crystal Watson?
Yes.
That carries a four to zero vote, affirmative. And that's it for the business item.
Chad, did you second?
I did second, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks guys. I don't think we already put a comment. Unless you'd like to comment publicly?
So, I do have a question about the utilities and I wasn't gonna bring it with. When we, when you have a recommendation in there that the public utility easement is only reserved for city water, city sewer, is that because you want other utilities being on the opposite side of the street? And you don't want joint trenches all over the place, is that the, the purpose of that?
That is correct.
And what if a developer comes to you and gives you a reason that says they don't want to do it that way?
Um, I believe they'd have to get approval from Road and Bridge based on their policy.
Okay. So that's a combination Road and Bridge and then our desire.
Okay. I've done subdivisions before with joint trenches and what a nightmare that is.
Which is why they prefer outside of the right-of-way, so they're not ripping of the right-of-way when they're doing updates.
They put the utility easements.
Yes.
Cool. Alright, to our work session, who's in charge of that?
Um, do we want to start with items of interest?
Sure.
Since that's next on the agenda. Do you have anything I don't know about?
I don't know that I have anything relative to updating my recommends, recommendations to commissioners other than March twenty-fifth is our public hearing, second public hearing on the contract. And after coming hearing the items, I would need to turn the time over to Tristan and have her share anything or Elise on anything that has come in, it's scheduled for the month of April.
Yeah, so for April, on the agenda, we have the conditional use permit for the gravel pit that was supposed to be tonight. And then we have two variances, we have one for a driveway width and then one for side yard and rear yard setbacks. On a shop, I believe, so. And that's it for April.
Okay.
And no other announcements, turn the time back to you.
Okay, and then so the work session, talks bylaws?
Yeah, so first I just wanted to introduce council bylaws to everybody since we have three new council members. These are bylaws that we've just updated throughout the years as we have new council members come in. The last time we updated them was twenty twenty-two. So it's been just about three years. So I just wanted to have you review those and then let us know if there's anything that you would like to change in those bylaws or if everything looked good for you. The bylaws are something that ultimately get approved by the commissioners. So if there is something that you would want to change, we would have first a public hearing to update those bylaws with you guys and then a public hearing where commissioners would make the ultimate decision on how they wanted the bylaws to look, so. If you have any comments for me now, great, if not, you can always email me too if you think you see anything that you want to change.
I read through these and I thought I'd read them before, so I don't know if they were the same, I was looking for a change.
They are the same, yeah, so they're probably in your binder that we gave you when you became a council member, so they are the same from that document.
I don't have any other questions, so.
Anybody else?
I didn't have any.
I didn't have any questions other than one that, okay, so these, as far as accusing.
Perfect, okay, so we will move on to section five eighty of the zoning ordinance. So section five eighty just establishes how the council will be set up, what the membership will look like, and then ultimately the main section that we'll look at is five eighty point eight, which are the powers and duties of the Planning and Development Council. So I just wanted to go through, bring that to your attention so that you can see there's a list of twelve items there of what your duties and responsibilities actually consist of. See if you had any questions on any of that, anything that we can help clarify for you, on what you're actually responsible for doing.
I think these are important to know because when we are having hearings and we are making decisions for whatever purpose, whether it's a, uh, a variance or, or, or a subdivision, it doesn't matter, but, um, I was on the council for about a year before I read these and it's like, oh, oh, I actually have the authority to make a suggestion and it stick, right? That's why we're here as a council, is to discuss those things that we're doing a driveway this next week, we've had some before that were by law too close to a ripperian area and we as the council have the ability to make a change to that with the authority to say, okay, we can't still put in this shop even though it's within so many feet. Through discussion and justification, obviously, we do that, but, um, that's why this is important and we read these every now and then.
Any questions, concerns, comments?
No.
I like that it says comprehensive plan in number eleven, because that was the one I was looking forward to make sure it's there.
Yeah.
Yep.
An item to remember, even though you're not elected, we try to keep a fair cross-section of representatives throughout the county. Each of you are in different areas of the county and, um, ultimately, the commission over a particular area is the legislative representative to the constituency of that area. But you also have that duty as being somewhat representative government and you represent those areas and the interests in which you live. So, when you deliberate, there are times when you are mindful of, Chad, your area may look completely geographically different than something that Molly, you're in Hinden Falls area, Blazer Highway. So, you take into account as you deliberate how that looks relative to that area that you somewhat represent. And that way we try to get good deliberations of a cross-section of the populace of the county and not just four or five distinct individuals. And that's why those powers and duties have, have a greater role, um, as you. Any other questions?
None, none for me.
Okay, and then our last discussion, I just wanted to bring up a couple of things for when we're working through findings. Um, just as a little bit of a quick training to make sure that we don't state opinions before we start working through findings. Um, if we're stumped and we're, if you're having a discussion and you just don't know where to start, the best thing to do is just start working through the findings. Because we know.
Right tonight.
Yeah, we know we have to have affirmative action on every single finding, so if one of them is a no, then we already know what the motion is gonna need to be because now we can't approve it with one that's not in the affirmative, so. So I feel like that's just the easiest thing to do when we get stuck and don't know how to proceed. Just start working through the findings and usually it'll flush itself out, so. And then, um, we talked about it a little bit at the beginning, but we do have new recording equipment, so we need to make sure we're always projecting the very back of the room needs to be able to hear in order for the recording to be able to pick it up, so. And then the last part is conflict of interest. I was hoping to have our legal counsel here tonight to go over the actual Idaho code portion of conflicts of interest, but I do have a printout from this little pamphlet that we found in the office, so if you want to take one and pass it down. It just gives a little bit of information for you on what a conflict of interest is. One of the biggest things or a couple of the biggest things that I took out of this is. When in doubt, disclose. So that roll call roll roll call and disclosure right at the beginning, you drove by the site. You talked to a neighbor, you know, whatever the case may be, always disclose that at the at the beginning. And I feel like you guys are always really good about doing that. And then. The other is err on the side of caution. You know, we've had conversations with a couple of you about should I recuse myself, should I not recuse myself? We can always have our legal counsel do a conflict of interest analysis that will tell us. According to Idaho code, this is not a conflict of interest. However, if you still feel like you shouldn't, don't. Just recuse yourself, you know, just because we give or our legal counsel gives you the. Yes, it's or no, it's not a conflict of interest, that doesn't mean you have to continue. If you feel. Like you shouldn't, just don't, so. And then in here it also talks about rather than as an individual making a determination on whether there's a conflict of interest. Some council members or boards decide to go about it as a group. Here's what I feel like I have a conflict of interest. Do you feel like I have a conflict of interest? And that way it's not necessarily on just you as an individual trying to make that determination yourself. You could make that determination as a group if you want to. So if that's something that you would like to discuss further, we can talk about maybe even putting something like that in the bylaws where. If there is a conflict of interest or a perceived conflict of interest, the whole council determines whether that member should recuse themselves instead of. The sole responsibility being on that one person, so. Um, but next month, our legal counsel should be able to be here to actually go over the Idaho code portion of the conflict of interest, so.
Data, would it then be amongst us at the time of roll call?
Yes, yeah, yeah, you would bring up that conflict of interest and then we could have a discussion, put that as part of the agenda.
Where there's a discussion of those disclosures and whether a recusal needs to happen.
And that's a discussion amongst ourselves, right?
Correct.
With the public.
We don't have.
Public is.
They're they're game all, they can be here, they don't have to be.
They're listening, yeah.
Yeah, they have no input.
Yeah.
Because there has been times, I think, that with a council of twenty five people. And multiple contractors that be doing business, all of them on the ballot, there is times that we could end up with one. One or two people with a conflict of interest that we have to discuss. And if that's the case and we don't have a council because we have people with conflicts of interest. I mean, that's why when people have called me when they have a hearing, I just tell them straight up, we can't talk about the hearing here, else I have to recuse myself. Right?
Yep. Yeah.
I generally always refer, when I get questions, I refer them to the packet when it comes out. They always ask the questions, everything. I said, it's all public information, look at the packet, you know what I know.
Yeah, and that's perfect.
I've had them ask questions and then gone back and said, look, I can't talk to you about the hearing itself, I can talk to you about mechanics of this. And say, don't come to the meeting with a motion. Find facts, read the packet, know what you're talking about, because you got three minutes.
And send them power away. Tell them to call the office. We'd be more than glad. We've invited people before with concerns to the office to literally do that, get them a copy of the packet or copies of. Things that they have concerns about, have a brief discussion, you know.
Yeah, I have referred them to staff.
That 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 was the best, in my opinion. Send them our way.
Perfect.
And council, when you are working through findings, just remember. Ask yourself, can I answer this in the affirmative if I place certain conditions? Would that make it a yes?
Try to make an option to to approve it, right?
Correct.
Not that we have to approve it, but at the same time.
Not necessarily approve it, but our deserved ability.
Yeah. I mean, going through those twelve, that's our job.
Correct.
Is to not come up here and say, no, you can't build your garage because you're next to Riparian area. What can we do to lessen the impact on the Riparian area and still allow you to do your job? Right? That's that's what our role is. So as an example.
And another comments, questions?
I have another question. So let's say there's kind of like an iffy situation where you're like, well. You still contribute to the conversation and to but can you not vote in the end or do you have to vote?
You can vote negative.
Or vote.
We don't all have to vote the same.
You always have to vote.
Is there a yes, no, or a? Yes.
Yes and yes.
Same, okay, so you can't say.
If you have a personal conflict and everybody's voting yes and you don't.
There you go.
The rest of this committee isn't gonna take you out in the park and not beat you up because you're the one dissenting vote. I mean, that's just what democracy is all about.
Right, they're not dissenting, but I didn't know if there was a it would be yes, no, or a.
Yes, no, recused is what the other vote option is.
Yeah.
Recused from the entire conversation.
But wouldn't recuse be a roll call? For that topic or we just refuse some of the votes?
No, it's just recused from the vote.
We're not getting much of it.
So we could discuss participate and then no.
No, if you are recusing yourself, you're recusing yourself from the entire item.
Couple of other items relative to workshop, relative to findings. Um, some techniques as you listen to testimony because you rule on. The ordinance and what it is that does or doesn't support or the application and its compliance with the ordinance, okay? And just make yourself notes. For instance, a bad habit developed from old councils and it carried along for years about. Before you go into findings, they would be a little bit of conversation prior to. Our recommendation is stop the conversation prior to.
Have the conversation during the findings.
Yes.
Yeah, we would do that. And I felt like we were doubling up everything we were doing.
Yes.
Well, you start going in circles and then you don't know what you've talked about.
And so as you hear something from an applicant that you recognized. A alliance with compliance, then make yourself a note.
So when we get to findings, we can bring it up.
So that you can develop findings in the affirmative. If you're in the process and you all of a sudden have somebody who comes really well prepared as against and they argue against the ordinance. And it is very clear to you that, oh, we have a conflict, we have a problem here. We need to be mindful that this is not, this testimony is showing that they are not in complete. Make that note so that you can speak to that. Because if you feel really strongly that the applicant has missed that particular component and the negative side has absolutely enforced that. You have to go down the one that is the most prominent in regards to testimony as you develop your findings, okay? So just as some as some thoughts and some techniques. Now, I as as my title, and I've said it before, but for clarity for for you. Uh, as the director, I am the clerk of the council. I do not have a voting right, however, I do have the opportunity to interject and help you craft language in your findings. Um, we've stretched it a little bit. I need to find out for sure, but Tristan, in in her capacity as the assistant director. I believe she also has that authority. It's not specifically stated in the ordinance like it is towards my title, but. I believe she has the right to help craft language as well, so when you hear us.
Wordsmith and stuff.
We're not trying to influence um the vote, we're just trying to make sure you have a defensible position. In the finding that you're creating, so that if it does get challenged and it goes down the legal path. The the people that are beyond us that go to the next meeting, they have they have that to fall back on.
Much appreciated when you guys. A lot of times we're stuck without reason, we just don't know how to word it correctly.
Understood, understood.
Question, can you bring up something about don't put per staff report? Can you explain that to me?
We used to all the time say, well, the staff report just said why we're doing this. And we used to just put per staff report and then Brian got on our case and said.
Legal counsel said that is not a defensible position. You have to have a finding written on that.
The staff report is there to aid us in our decision. We can't say. Our decision is made because the staff report says so. They want to have us having a discussion.
You can have us type word for word of what the staff report says, but it actually needs typed in the findings.
Okay, and that's the other reason, that's what we've been doing. That house said was if it goes to court, right, if we appeal council or commission upholds council's decision and then they choose to go. To a judicial review and a judge looks at it and says, well, it just says per staff report, what the heck is in the staff report?
Yeah, the staff report's eighty pages long.
Yeah, who did this, the staff or the council?
Yeah, so all of the information has to be in the findings. Makes sense.
That was the position that legal came from, what you just said, Chad.
No.
So who wrote the findings? The staff is not the legal body, the quasi judicial body you are, and that's why. When they go to these, they literally go to the findings first. If they find, if they say if the findings are sound, they're done.
No.
And that's what they're looking for, okay?
Awesome.
Anything else?
Do we need a motion to close our hearing?
Nope.
Because we resolve business items.
You are the man and you tell us if adjourned.
We are adjourned.